This time we'd like to cause a Shreveport City Council meeting to order. I was gonna ask that if you have your cell phones, if you would be kind enough to silence them, turn them off. I'm gonna ask that Councilman Boudreaux would leave us in a prayer. Councilwoman Taylor would leave us in a prayer.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us all together to do the city's business. I pray that we can do this in an orderly fashion to better the living environment for the citizens of Shreveport. I also pray for our public safety officers, for our police officers and firefighters. I pray for this council to give us wisdom in your name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like Clerk Colerode.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Foote.
Present.
Councilwoman Boudreaux.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
I'm here.
And Councilman Bowden.
Thank you.
On tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, April 11, 2022, and the city council meeting Tuesday, April 12, 2022. Does any council member have any awards or recognition of distinguished guests not exceed 15 minutes? Mr. Whitehorn, do you have any communications from the mayor that not exceed 15 minutes?
We will have some tomorrow.
Thank you. Does any member have any questions for property standards for Mr. Green at this particular time? Yes, sir.
I don't really have anything, but I want to thank Mr. Green for always being responsive and answering and getting out there. I think last week y'all went up to bring light for me and it seemed to the citizen was pretty happy with the results, so thank you for what you did.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Green. Ms. Cloggy, is he here? You have master plan report. Is there, did everyone receive a budget of actual financial report?
It'll be available tomorrow. Chairman.
Thank you. I see there are no public hearings. Mr. Whitehorn, will there be any legislation to be added tomorrow?
I'm not aware of any.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
At this particular time, we have no legislation to be added. Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items and as well as agenda items, and you will have three minutes to speak. We have no executive performance, but as of right now, we will have Councilwoman Taylor to read the names off for the individuals that have come to speak.
Pastor Edward Brown.
And you'll have three minutes.
Pastor Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How everybody doing? Mayor, city councilmen, chairman. I'm here to talk about the street drain. The people coming to me, Ms. Levede, I just found out Ms. Levede got that area right there. And the people came to me about it. It's between Second Street and Leadbetter and my people, they came to me. And I told them I'll come up and talk about it, that the drain is real bad there. And I just talked to Mr. Green. Mr. James, he supposedly took care. That house been there for almost a year on Wallace, right there where I said. And every time I called him, he, "Oh, we taking care, we taking care." That man ain't doing nothing. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired. And y'all know I don't come up fussing about nothing. But I'm tired of it. And I told him just then, I said, "I'm finna talk about it." Because it's just, it don't make no sense that that house been there that long, been burnt up, that trash, that, that, the, all that junk, just there. And I'm tired of that. And my cousin, she says she's tired of it. And I'm coming to speak on behalf of her and speak on behalf of me, because I live there. And it don't make no sense that that man, I seen one day, he just rolled through there. Ain't stop. And every time I text him and call, "Oh, yeah, we doing..." How long does it take? How long? And then the lady came to me when I was out there cutting my yard the other day on Wallace. She said, "Mr. Brown, what are they doing with the Leadbetter?" I said, "I'm gonna find out." Because the drainage is real bad. Calvary Baptist Church is right there. And then she showed me where they got a little drainage there. That drainage, you can't get nothing in there. It is not gonna drain there. And that water, you can, you can almost fish in there. I walked through there the other day. Because I'm finna be the president of Neighborhood Association over there. I'm finna start that. And y'all know me, I don't come up here fussing. I don't come up here arguing. I come up here because I know you guys got a job and I know that. But nothing is getting done. And then that light right there on Union, it's, didn't, it don't have no lights in it and it need painted, because when I was riding with my friend the other day, they almost passed it because the light is not, you can't see the light. I mean, I know it's little bitty things like that, but it, things need to be done. And I know guys, like y'all know me, I don't come up here with no complaining, but when I get fed up with something, I'm fed up. And I'm fed up with that drainage over there on Leadbetter and Second, and I'm fed up with that house on Wallace. It has to be. I had to spray over there because the roaches were taking up over there. I mean, and he won't do nothing. He got mad because they wanted to get all that stuff out of there. And I'm serious. Please, help me.
You share the house on Wallace with Mr. Green?
Ma'am.
Did you share the house on Wallace with?
Yes, ma'am. I have shared it with him. I have shared it with Mr. James. I've shared it with all of them.
Okay.
With Mr. Who?
The man that, that the, he said he, the man ain't doing nothing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mrs. Green.
Structure of the property will be in environmental court on May 3.
Mr. Brown.
It was cited March 22.
He's letting you know when that, when that piece of property is going to court?
Huh?
It will be in court on May 3.
Ma'am, they been telling me that for how long? They've been telling me that, Mr. Green.
I can only give one day. I can only give you one day.
Has he been telling me that?
Thank you. He said he'll, it'll be in court on May 3.
Okay.
It'll be in court on May 3.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It's hoping in court, in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Noel, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. Venu?
Boudreaux.
Sorry, Boudreaux.
Can I say one more thing?
No, sir.
Y'all know, I'm sorry. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Noah Boudreaux with Venu Solutions. Here to speak a little bit about 165, the tax abatement for Venu. We were granted that five years ago by this council. The company that I represent has invested over $18 million in remodeling and revising the Silver Building downtown. And we have really, really added a lot to the downtown district, and we're looking for renewal of that tax abatement. The business decision that we made five years ago was kind of based on that tax abatement as well as the renewal. We are wanting to partner even stronger over the next five years with the city of Shreveport to add more development into the downtown area. We want, we have partnered with a national real estate broker in order to help us start to build out the third and fourth floors of that building to bring more potential businesses into the downtown area. And we're also offering tenant improvement allowances of up to $250,000 per floor. So it's quite an investment that we're looking to kind of recontinue to invest in that building, trying to attract even more businesses to the downtown area. And we are committed to working with the city of Shreveport in order to be able to do that. So I'm here today asking for your support so that we can continue with the tax abatement over the next five years, and we would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Boudreaux.
Thank you.
Janet Britton.
Hi, I'm Janet Britton. I'm also with Venu Solutions. Here before you to ask for a renewal of our tax abatement like Mr. Boudreaux indicated. The LED reviewed our application and presented that with a resolution for your consideration. We've met all of the requirements of the tax abatement program, and like Mr. Boudreaux indicated, we're committed to continue the development of the downtown area of Shreveport, and we're very excited about that. We respectfully request your support of our renewal of that tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Britton. Marvin Mohammed.
Good evening, everyone, to the chair, the rest of the council. And I'm saddened that I had to come today to speak on this issue, and I tended to get down here much earlier, but as we recall, on March 11, in the online edition of The Inquisitor, this owner and editor made some very, what I call disparate comments to African-Americans in Shreveport. The term that he used was tar baby. And while many would simply throw it off as meaningless as nothingness, many of us took it as a, as an assault. Not only an assault of everyday citizens, but particularly on our elected, on our black elected officials. What is a tar baby? Historically, a tar baby was a doll that is made up of tar and turpentine. This doll was clothed and placed on the side of the road so that Brother Rabbit... Who is Brother Rabbit? Brother Rabbit was, if I can, was the epitome of a runaway slave. And he was placed there. And this Brother Rabbit stopped and, as he saw this tar baby on the side of the road and spoke. But it being a doll, of course, it was, it was blind, deaf, and mute, so it never said anything. The Brother Rabbit being insulted, then went up closer to the tar baby to account of him to asking, "Why did he not speak back?" And of course, we know what happened at that point. He became more entangled with the tar baby, because the tar baby was a trap that was put on the side of the road by one of his nemesis, Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox, of course, is the slave owner, the slave catcher, if I can, that was sent out to get Brother Rabbit. We're gonna be asking the city of Shreveport, the Shreveport Chapter, the NAACP, to cut off any dollars, public dollars, that goes to The Inquisitor. We don't believe that this, this city should be involved with any publication that represents itself in that manner. Lastly, we're gonna be also asking all public officials elected, particularly those who are gonna be running for reelection, to denounce this type of language. I thank you for this opportunity, for these few words. And at our executive committee meeting next week, we will have a resolution to that point. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. That's it. Thank you. There are no items to be under consent agenda for introduction or to be adopted. Mr. Whitehorn, would you perceive regular legislation, agenda legislation?
Resolution 165, approving a restoration tax abatement renewal application for Venu Solutions LLC, 601 Mileham Street. Resolution 24, authorizing the employment of legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport. Resolution 44, authorizing the mayor to execute an off-airport land lease between the city of Shreveport and Federal Aviation Administration. Resolution 55, authorizing the execution of a retainer agreement with Attorney Scott Chafin relative to certain consent decree matters. Resolution 56, authorizing the approval of a price change and entering a contract with Holmack Corporation for the purchase of 1825 cubic yard rear loader packers. Resolution 58, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject bids, to reject all bids received for the firebed maintenance Hollywood, Monk House, Elvis Presley Boulevard, and Kennedy Boulevard. Bid RFQ number 22-509. Resolution 59, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject all bids received for the replaced roof on Lucas Administration Building, bid RFQ number 22-516. Resolution 60, adopting the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the legislative auditor's office of the state of Louisiana. Resolution 61, to recognize April 22 as sexual assault, I'm sorry, April 2022 as sexual assault awareness month in the city of Shreveport. That's it.
Thank you. At this particular time, the city attorney has asked that the Holmack representatives would come and speak at this particular time.
Mr. Whitehorn.
Chairman.
Counselor Fielding.
This is item, Resolution 50, ah, lost my place. 56?
Resolution 56.
56. And that's the item of discussion that's up for vote tomorrow by the council with regard to the trash truck. And there was some issues about trash trucks. And there was an issue with regard to the purchase price, et cetera. So if you don't mind, could you explain the reason for the price increase in that regard?
Yes, sir. So my name is John Bolton. I'm the vice president of sales and marketing for Holmack Corporation. And so basically, I can give you a, just a shortened version. I know that there has been some discussion with legal before this meeting. And so basically, what we're doing is we're looking to call upon the contract and exercise Section 4.0 of Section 20 of the Baton Rouge contract for vendors, and it's called excusable delay. And so what we, what we have encountered here, which the whole world has countered with the pandemic, is a lot of different delays, supply chain shortages, also price increases by vendors that supply to not only Holmack but other companies. So with regards to Section 4.0, I don't know if you want me to read Section 4.0. Is everybody familiar with it? Or would you like me to go ahead and read that section for you?
I would ask that you would present whatever reasoning you have.
Yes, sir. So, so in Section, in Section 4.0, both 4.1 and 4.2, "The contractor should not be liable for any excess cost if the failure to perform the contract arises out of causes beyond the control and without the fault or negligence of the contractor. Such causes may include, but are not restricted to, acts of God or the public enemy, act of government in either sovereign or contractual capacity, fires, floods, epidemics, quarantine, restrictions, strikes, freight, embargoes, and unusually severe weather. But in every case, the failure to perform must be beyond the control and without the fault and negligence of the contractor." Just one example of this, where this cost has increased due to no performance issues upon Holmack, is the case that the chassis manufacturers have taken all of the chassis, delayed those chassis for over a year, us getting them, and gave price increases to all those chassis. And we were given a choice. Either you take those chassis, or we'll sell them to somebody else and they'll be gone. So that price increase is being incurred by us with no fault of our own, right? Through an act of God, because we all know what the whole world's been through with this pandemic and the supply chain issues globally that has taken place. So we're looking for, we're looking for assistance, and we're looking to execute on that excusable delay clause, and we're asking the city of Shreveport to understand the predicament that we're in, that it was no fault of ours that the delay has happened and that the prices have increased due to the shortage of supply chain. And so we're asking for some, some help there. It's not additional profit, none of those things. If you guys have seen the latest bid, you'd understand how far pricing has, has come up. We're just looking to recover those costs, those additional costs that was no fault of ours. We would have delivered on time if it hadn't been for the pandemic and the global supply chain shortage. And I believe if you look at the contract, in the general contract clause is under 4.0 excusable delay, we feel confident that this falls within that. We're asking for assistance and help.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here today.
Yes, sir.
Did you submit a fixed bid to the city for the trucks we're talking about?
I would think it was a fixed bid, yes.
When did you submit it?
I believe it was submitted probably Q1 of last year, I believe. I don't know the exact date. I don't have it in front of me. March 26?
Q1 of 2021.
Yes, sir.
So almost a year after the pandemic started.
Yes, sir. Before supply chains, before all of those issues. Yes, sir.
What would your gross profit margin be on the sale of these trucks to the city if you did not receive the price increases you requested?
Yeah, I have no earthly idea. I'm not involved in any of that.
You don't know that?
No, I don't know that answer.
I'm sorry. I thought you just said that these additional, this additional pricing was necessary to cover costs and not for additional profit.
That's right.
What will your margins be?
So I think, just to give you an example, the chassis, I believe that each chassis cost was increased by $9,000. So the chassis, the local chassis dealer came to us and said, "Due to the pandemic and supply chain shortages, we are going to add $9,000 to these chassis that you've already committed to, and you like it, great, and if you don't, that's fine, too." So that's, that's part of it as an example for you. I don't know if that answers your question or not, sir.
If the city were not to agree to the additional price increase you've requested, would your company still turn a profit on the sale of these trucks to the city?
Yeah, I have no earthly idea whether there would be a profit, there wouldn't be a profit. I didn't come prepared to, to talk about the profit or the actual costs and things like that. That was discussed. I do know that, that the price increase and the letters were sent out by my company in order to address those. And I'm not sure who all has seen those and who all has talked about those, but I wasn't, I wasn't there for that. Yes, sir.
I have a range of concerns about this issue, but I would think that every member of the council would want to know whether this additional price increase that this company is requesting is gonna cover costs or would be additional profit. That's, that seems like a basic piece of information that you should all know before you cast a vote on this issue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And sir, will you have that information tomorrow?
I don't think I'll have any of that information. I thought that information was turned over to council maybe at a meeting last month, I believe. Is that where that was turned over? Yeah. It was turned over to your council last month.
We'll look at it.
Or maybe earlier this month or last month. I'm not sure, Mr. Johnson.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I agree. We just need to look at that. If it was, it sounded like, I don't know if it's $9,000 for each chassis, is that what we getting charged? And is that just the cost you turned over to us, the $9,000?
Yes, sir. So that, that's the additional cost. We provided letters showing the actual additional cost from the actual vendor themselves, letting us know that they were raising the prices and that they were delaying the delivery throughout the time. And you should have all that information. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I just, I wasn't prepared to discuss it, so I apologize.
I thought that the, a total was, a total additional per packers, how much?
I think it was 20.
I think it was eight, maybe, or I thought it was 18 or something like that.
Close to 18 or something like that.
So, so we have 9,000 for the chassis, and then the others coming from?
The others coming from the increased cost due to delay, from everything across the board, from, from valves and fluids and steel and all of those things that increased over the time because of the inability to receive the chassis in order to get the job done. So as everything is increasing, we're just sitting there, and all of the costs are increasing. I think there was some examples, our CEO actually met with, with council, so.
I'm looking at the contract, and Counselor Nicholson, it was March 15, 2021.
One year after the pandemic started.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm with, I'm with my colleagues, Counselor Nicholson and Counselor Bowman. I would like to see, you know, I don't want to see y'all break in a 10%, 20% additional profit off of, off of this. I, I just, I said this at the last meeting, I feel like that we, we have a contract and I understand what you're saying, but I also understand that we've, we've got to look out for almost $200,000 in citizens' money as well. So if y'all could have those, or at least somebody have us those answers tomorrow, that would, that would help us make a decision.
Yeah, I think you have all the documents. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one further question. You're asking the city of Shreveport to pay you more than you bid on these trucks. Have you made a similar request of any other municipality?
I don't know if there's been another request or not.
Not that I'm aware of. Not this, not in this similar situation, sure not.
Not in this similar situation?
Because we have not had the delays in chassis from other vendors, from other manufacturers. So, no? No.
No. Well, I'm not gonna say no. I don't know. I can, I can find out. I'm sure there's occasions where it has this many units. No, I can tell you that.
Do you also sell trucks to private purchasers?
We do, but it's only less than 5% of our business. It's very seldom do we sell into the private industry. It's mainly municipalities around North America. Yes, sir.
So 95% of your business is selling to municipalities around the country?
Yes, sir.
And you certainly bid to provide trucks to other municipalities in Q1 or Q2 of 2021?
Yeah, I do believe that there was some bidding. It was very slow, but there was some bidding out there. Yes, sir.
Well, I'd also like to know why we're the only municipality receiving this request. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes. Then no other questions? Thank you.
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
For the chassis, is there only one company that supplies this?
Yeah, so, so the way it works is whenever you're going to do a bid, what we do is we try to use a, a local chassis dealer, right? And so the local chassis dealer, we have a relationship with them. They give us pricing on the chassis, right, with a date of whatever, 90, 120, whatever, 10 days, whatever, and here's the price. So we base our bid based upon the price that the component provider, which is the chassis that we're talking about right now, Ms. Tappert. And so what we do is, is we take their quote to us and we add it to our body, right? And then we provide you with a price. They came back and said, "We're not gonna be able to get you those. We don't know when we'll get you those. They'll be sometime next year in 2022, and the price is going up $9,000."
So then we look at another dealer?
Well, so here's the thing. So right now, if, if you, did you see the recent bid, the latest bid?
No, I'm saying at the time when they submitted and told you all.
Yes, ma'am. They're even more expensive now. They're much more expensive. So there's no way to go to another dealer and, number one, get them within the next year, probably, maybe. And the second thing would be the ability to, to get a lesser price. That's virtually not out there. Everything is skyrocketed, so.
So if you bid out to?
According to the bid, it had to be within 10 miles or something from Shreveport.
So, and if you bid out to other municipalities, again, I think I have the same concern, you would know that if they were asking for packers or somewhere along that line, would the city of Shreveport be the only person who would see this particular increase when there be a difficulty for the rest of them as well, other municipalities, if they were seeking packers?
If they were seeking packers and they were, and they were involved with this chassis dealer that delayed the chassis by a year now with those price increases, possibly.
So the chassis dealer has to be in how many miles?
I think the contract said within 10 miles of Shreveport or something, I think.
Is that a requirement?
According to your contract, yes. I mean.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? None. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any members have any questions on these items that Mr. Whitehorn just introduced? If not, Mr. Whitehorn, will you proceed with introduction of resolution not to be adopted prior to May 10th, 2022?
Resolution 62, authorizing the mayor to execute certain documents and instruments relative to the subordination of a loan and mortgage relating to Coventry Place Limited Partnership. Resolution 63, declaring certain City of Shreveport, Louisiana supplies, materials and equipment, especially vehicles, specifically vehicles to be surplus and to authorize a purchasing agent or her designate to sell and dispose of said surplus property for public option and to otherwise provide respect or to. Resolution 64, authorizing the mayor of the City of Shreveport to consent to a partial assignment of an undivided 25% interest by Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of an oil and gas lease to Mammoth Minerals LLC and FPPCC USA Inc. Order 65, authorizing the mayor of the City of Shreveport to consent to the, to the partial assignment of an undivided 30% interest to Mammoth Mineral LLC of two oil and gas leases to FPPCC USA Inc. Resolution 66, authorizing the mayor of the City of Shreveport to sign a consent of the assignment of Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of three oil and gas leases to Silver Hill Haynesville E&amp;P LLC. Resolution 67, implored professionals with respect to the issuance of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana of not exceeding 70 million, $650,000 of general obligation bonds in one or more series on a taxable or tax exempt basis.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like the administration to explain Resolution 62, and I'd like to get an overview on all of the oil and gas leases.
Is Ms. Tracy? Is this the home program funds? Is this the one you're talking about, Resolution 62?
Coventry.
Coventry Place.
Coventry Place.
Okay.
She said 62.
I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor, you said 60.
Resolution 62.
62.
Yeah, this is Coventry Place.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Tracy, can, can you come up and talk about Coventry Place? Are you familiar with that one? Okay. Ms. Moore is out of town. I can tell you what the fact sheet says. And it talks about in 20, in 2001, the City of Shreveport awarded a loan $800,000 in home improvement funds to Coventry Place Limited Partnership for the construction of Coventry Place Apartments. This low-income multifamily 48-unit development is located at 4665 North Market. Coventry Place Limited Partnership is now seeking consent to subordinate the city's mortgage, securing the home loan to its senior lenders. And Thea is the one that prepared this, and I think both her and Ms. Bunny is out of town. So we need to postpone if we can.
So it's not supposed to be adopted into the tent?
Thea will be here tomorrow.
Okay. So on the oil and gas leases? 64.
Yes, ma'am. Malcolm Statlander with the City Engineers Office. Do you have specific questions or?
Just give me an overview.
Okay, what we're doing is, or what we've been requested to do by the current leaseholders, they want to assign their ownership interest of those leases to different owners. And there's been three requests made, all three separate resolutions. One is a full ownership assignment, one is a 30% ownership assignment, and one is a 25% ownership assignment, 12 and 1/2% to one ASN E and 12 and 1/2% to another ASN E. So this is fairly routine in the industry. The parish has been asked to do the same thing with their oil and gas leases that are associated with these properties and we're, but we have to have council's approval for the mayor to sign these assignments.
So these leases are already executed?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They've been in effect, some have been in effect since 2004.
Okay.
And then some have been in effect since 2021, relatively new lease.
Are they, are they in a certain district?
They are in certain sections and different council districts, Council District A, Council District F, Council District G.
You let me know where the one is in A, is this in Allendale?
Um, I'll, I'll let you know. I don't, I'm not positive if it's in Allendale or not. I don't have a map. 181434 and 181435 are the sections. I think it may be in Allendale.
Okay.
But I can get that for you and have it for you tomorrow.
And this is the reassignment of the lease?
Ma'am?
It's the reassignment of the lease?
It's an assignment of the lease, that's right. And we're just, and actually, two of these have already been assigned and done and recorded. And all's, these resolutions are dealing is to authorize the mayor to sign the acceptance or the approval of this assignment.
We do know what the city is to gain?
What the city is to gain?
Yeah, or they're using our public right of ways, correct? They're using the right of ways or adjudicated properties with these leases?
Yes, ma'am, and I mean, they have the right to use those because they have leased those, they have a current lease, and the, the lease allows them to assign their ownership interest.
So I'm asking, what is our percentage that we receive back if there is with this, with this? Do we stand to gain anything from the leases that are already executed? Has there been any funding from the lease? That's what I'm asking. Any investment?
No.
No royalties?
No, ma'am, we have a current oil and gas lease that we're obligated under.
Okay.
And so none of those terms of the leases are going to change.
Okay.
Everything's the same. It's just, I don't want to call it a formality, but I think that's probably what it is, what we're doing here.
Malcolm?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is this due to Pine Wave selling their, selling their company to this Mammoth in order, and I believe the way it was explained to me, and tell me if I'm right or wrong, is Pine Wave is selling to Mammoth. And in order for us to get any, I guess royalties, you know, our leases with Pine Wave, and if, if they sell it to Mammoth, we have to have something on record so that if we do recoup any revenue, it would come from Mammoth.
But I think that's correct. Chief Whitehorn?
Thank you, sir.
Are we good?
We're good.
Okay.
You let me know those in District A.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, will you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to May 10th, 2022?
Ordinance number 55, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 56, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 57, amending the 2022 General Fund budget. Ordinance 58, amending the 2022 budget for the General Fund. Ordinance 59, declaring certain city property be surplus. Ordinance 60, authorizing an encroachment into the city's public right of way located on portion of Dean Road and Cedar Creek Drive as more fully described herein and to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute an encroachment permit with Pine Wave Energy. Ordinance 61, to amend Chapter 102, Article 2s and 3A of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to vehicles for hire, license fees and taxable, and taxi cab fares. Ordinance 62, zoning case number 21-223-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Stoner Avenue, approximately 263 feet east of Crestville Avenue, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R3 multifamily residential districts to C1 neighborhood commercial district. Ordinance 63, zoning case number 22-5-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Yuri Drive, approximately 200 feet south of Kings Place, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from, I think that's L1 Light Industrial District to LMU Indust, to IMU Industrial Mix Use District. Ordinance 64, zoning case number 22-16-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Stevens Road and Florida Lucas Road, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-1-7 Single Family Residential District to R-1-7 Single Family Residential PUD Plan Unit Development District. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions on any of these items?
I don't know what's 64, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just wanted to know what's 64.
He has a question on 64, Mr. Whitehorn?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to know what is that, what is that going to be? I think it's in Councilman Jackson's district. I didn't know if, if there's going to be a... Thank you, Mr. Clark.
What's happening here, Mr. Bowman, is that the applicant has requested some attached dwellings, which are townhouses, in a single-family development, in a single-family dwelling development. In order to do that, they would have to get a PUD, Plan Unit Development. And as you know, the process, by having a PUD, the applicant states that he will provide certain amenities to the property in exchange for the ability to do these townhouses. Because ordinarily, all they could be, all they would be allowed to do are single-family detached homes.
It looks like on the, on the plat that there's like, what about 10 of those townhouses?
Right. And the lots are a little smaller than the, the required 7,000 square feet for those townhouses, but that's all part of the PUD, and that's all the exchange for allowing them to do that, that they would do certain amenities.
Okay.
It's, it's a park-like setting up. I think the detention pond will, will have a fountain-like use of it and other amenities.
Okay. And the lots are small, I thought they were, okay, I looked at it wrong, I thought they were larger.
No, sir, they're, they're small and...
Okay, all right. So I need to know? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Well, I've got, we've got Mr. Clark up here, on the Yuri Drive, what, what are they doing there?
Is that the one going from?
Industrial to industrial?
And that's the one I couldn't pull up, but I, from what I can remember, Councilman Butcher, the use is already in place with some type of animal, I think it's a animal hospital.
Or something like that?
Yeah. If I remember correctly, then they're just going to do an in-house amusement for, to add to that existing use.
Okay. So nothing, no real industries going?
No, no real industry.
Okay.
Totally insignificant.
Okay.
I was trying to pull it up, and I apologize, I couldn't get it pulled up.
I, I read what it said, but it was, it was a little unclear, and it kind of looked like they were already doing that from what I'd read, so.
Right, it's just an extension.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Nicholson has...
Ms. Clark, I don't think this one is for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gladly get out of your way.
Concerning ordinance 60, Mr. Whitehorn, if you are a member of your staff, could provide some additional information? I'd like to know how long Pine Wave anticipates keeping this?
We missed the norm, I got some information.
Waterline in place. I'd also like to know where they're going to be drawing water from, using the waterline to do their fracking?
Yes, sir. The, that particular waterline, there's a portion of this one that's going to be in, in city right of way, and there's a portion of it that's going to be in state right of way. They're, they're going to be coming off of Cedar, or yeah, Cedar Creek, going down, going west on Cedar Creek, going around that, that nursing home, hitting Dean Road, going, going north on Dean Road to cross underneath, and then coming all the way back down to Industrial Loop will be the portion of it that's, that's in the city, and the rest of it is going to be in the, in state right of way. And to this point, I don't think they've gotten their state permit either, but we're using a right of way encroachment permit to handle this. We're probably going to need to do some additional legislation later on, maybe to, to, you know, to have something that addresses this, this specifically. But they're going to be, they're going to be taking it out of one of the bayous, I don't know, Patrick, do you recall which bayou?
Rushy.
Rushy Bayou? Okay. Off of private property, you know, once it leaves the state right of way. And they've got contracts that are there for it. It started out that this was going to be in place for probably 15 days. I think now they're saying, you know, probably 25 days. I think the, I think the state issues like a 60-day permit for them to have it, have it done and, and finished. I did go out and drive it and look at it. This is going to probably have the minimal impact of anywhere that they could run it. I think it actually only crosses, you know, probably one driveway that I'm not sure is even being used at this point. So it would have, you know, fairly minimal impact and, you know, hopefully it's something to be in and out within, you know, 20, 21 days.
Should we issue a permit or consider issuing a permit with a finite time period attached to it rather than something that's open-ended like the state does?
We certainly could do that, yes, sir.
I agree.
Might, might be better, it's not my district, but it might be a better practice so that we don't issue one for eternity.
Yeah, and they decide they use it whenever they want to.
Yes, sir. And this is the one that I spoke with Councilman Jackson and Councilman Bowman about that actually impacts both of y'all's, y'all's district. The well itself is kind of over behind the Southwood High School that's in, in the parish.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wood. Are there any other questions on any of these items?
Mr. Chair, on the, on the fairgrounds field deal, I'm getting lots and lots of calls about it. Explain, explain how we are, where we're at with this, if you don't mind, Mr. Agan.
Just tell them it go get towed down. Just tell them that, that's what we go do.
Good afternoon. CEO.
CEO, council members, I guess, Mr. Butcher, um, specifically where we are on the process?
Well, that and, and, that and, you know, there's been a couple of people that have called me, that, of course, you know, they had the, or the play ball with Shane Sharkey and all that and I think that it, it just took a lot of, which, which took a lot of people by, uh, surprise that it's popped up again, which I, look, I understand it's black. I, I think, you know, I'm there with you on that, it looks horrible. But, but I, I just want to kind of figure out why tearing it down was more beneficial than to let a nonprofit? And I was told the other day, somebody called me, that another nonprofit had voiced an interest and was told no.
I don't think we've told anybody no. I think two or three things go on. People, of course, people want to save Fairgrounds Field. We all have a place in our heart for Fairgrounds Field. The problem is, is it isn't a condition that is, at this point, not repairable. I tried to put as much information as I could in the background information. And I've been at the city quite a while and, um, my very first job was power washing at Fairgrounds Field, pulling the tarp, being part of that staff out there. Um, about the time I came to work for the city, we had taken over the maintenance of Fairgrounds Field from the Major League Baseball organization that was there. Apparently, when it was built and opened in eighty-six, there were problems at the stadium from day one. I can say I was in high school in nineteen eighty-six, so I don't really know what those problems were, but I can tell you what we experienced after, about ten years later. It floods, it is built, the first floor of the entire stadium is built below grade. I was here about six or eight years, we did a project where we went in and tried to waterproof all around the stadium. We put in French drains, we did everything we could, and it still takes in water. First problem, so it's, not only does it flood when it rains, um, and even when there's not a big rain, it, water gets in because it seeps in because it's below grade. So we faced that problem for years. The bats became, I can tell you when I came to work at the city, they were pa- power washing every single day of a home stand because of the bats. The bats are not new, it is something that was never addressed, and here we are. And in two thousand, um, eleven, we had our last activity there, which was the SWAC Conference, um, Baseball Conference Playoffs. Very disappointing for the fans, it was embarrassing for the city. Um, we were not managing the stadium in-house at the time, but it just became apparent to us that, you know, no matter who comes to visit that stadium, it belongs to the city. It's a reflection on us. Uh, we have not had an activity or an event in there since two thousand and eleven. There's not been a viable tenant. We have had a lots and lots of conversations with people over the years about what they could do, what their ideas were, and it's everything from racetracks to drive-in theaters to bringing baseball back. And I think every time they really got down to it, an architect spent a lot of time with a lot of different people. You know, by the time you rebuild it, you could tear it down and do something different. It's a very, it's really sad when you go back and you look at the history of baseball stadiums. It's built as a big concrete structure. About three years after this was built, we all went to these new retro, have that old-style baseball stadium. What the team moved to is one of those. We don't have any luxury suites, so there's no real money-making opportunities other than day, game day tickets. You know, we went from having, when I first came to work at the city, over quarter of a million people going to baseball to about fifty thousand a year. I mean, it just slowly but surely, baseball just wasn't profitable. And I think that everybody who looked at it has great intentions, but that, their return on investment, they just couldn't seem to make it work. And we held on to it, the reason we're talking about it today and not ten years ago when we should have been having this discussion is because we give everybody the opportunity to look at it and come to us with a plan. We have never received a viable plan that had backing, financial backing, business plans, any of that. When we last operated it in two thousand and twelve, it costs, two thousand and eleven, I'm sorry, it cost us three hundred thousand dollars a year to operate it. We spent five thousand dollars a month on just utilities alone. And, you know, people say, well, why don't you just open it for high school baseball or little league baseball? It's just not financially sound practice to run a stadium just for utilities at five thousand a month. Um, we have tons of other facilities in the city and at the, you know, we have other sporting facilities that we use on a daily basis where our resources are going. And, you know, I've been asked, well, why, why weren't y'all keeping it up? And I said, well, for who and for what? You know, we were doing the best we could, the vandalism is terrible, the bats are a terrible situation. You know, there's six figures to get rid of. It's just been an ongoing problem and so that's why we're where we are today. And like I said, hindsight being what it is, we probably should have been talking about this ten years ago. But we tried, we tried with every group that had a great idea. I can say a lot of you have met with people and they just never come back to us with a viable plan. So that's how we got here today. And it has just become such an eyesore for the city too.
I, I agree.
It is, it's, I guess the time has come. And it's going to be a very complicated process. It's not like we can just go out there and take a wrecking ball. Um, you may have heard or you may not have that bats are protected species, the EPA regulates that. You cannot disturb the bats during mating season. Mating season began last Thursday, uh, Friday the fifteenth of April, goes through August. So by the time we contract, we're, you know, we just let the bids, we just secured a contractor. We're waiting still on some of his obligations to be met. He has to provide insurance and his bonds and all of those things. And once he gets that, then we have to route a contract to the mayor for signature. So it'll take us, you know, a while to get all of those requirements done and we have to wait till that's over, which is mid-August, before we can even start, um, any kind of demolition.
Who, who is the contractor?
Contractors, contractors Henderson Contracting, they are the successful bidder. I don't want to say contractor yet because they're not under contract.
Are they local?
Yes, sir.
What will the cost of the demolition be?
Cost of the demolition is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We believe the bat renewal, removal will be about two hundred.
And when the demolition is finished, we'll have a, a parking lot, a green space, what's the end product?
Just a green, just a cleared space.
The, the three eighty, is that with the bat removal?
No, sir.
So it's two hundred additional?
Yes.
Who's gonna do that?
He is securing his contractor now. We've had three different companies come out to look at it, he's asked for, you know, they have to come in full hazmat gear to come out there. You can't just walk out to Fairgrounds Field because the, the bat guana is dangerous to your health. But they are looking at that now.
I have a, a small request on behalf of the family of former Mayor John Hussey. Uh, this was constructed during Mayor Hussey's administration. There apparently is a plaque of some kind at the top of the stairs. Uh, they've suggested that it would be very nice to present that to Mayor Hussey unless there is some impediment to doing so. I think that would be a nice gesture if the administration and the council are agreeable.
And one of the reasons we're doing it with the clearing the property and the equipment surplus is so that we can follow the guidelines for disposition of property because we've had a lot of people ask about seats and other signs, but there are processes we have to follow to do that. But that is why we're asking to clear the property and its equipment separately.
Chell, would, would you check to see what it takes to get the plaque that?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Nicholson was referring to?
We will ask the contractor when he goes in to remove any plaques because I think there are several out there that people have asked about. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chell.
Alright, thanks.
Any others watching on any of this legislation?
No, at the end of the day, I just, you know, for, 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 I think, seven years now, I've been asking about just getting it tore down. So it's, it's, I'm, I'm adamant about having that removed from over there. It's, it's, you know, the, it's not the best, uh, eyesight in the world, period, at the fairgrounds, but then that, that's, that's ugly, and then we've been spending money trying to keep it maintained, cutting the grass. Of course, you can't do anything about the bats, but then it's, you know, then you got a lot of talk about, well, it's not even saying it's our bats, but, you know, they, when, when they originate, the bats from the hospital side anyway, but it's, but I can't say whether they came from my house that's in Queensborough or, or from the hospital, but that's another big issue, so, um, no, it, it just, it needs to come down. I was joking when I said it earlier, but I'm being honest about it now, it just needs to come down. And that's that, you know, we have people to come up and say, well, you know, we want, we want to do this, we want to revitalize, we want, but nobody came with a check. At the end of the day. So, you know, I can tell you I want to buy your house today, I'd love to buy it. If I don't bring you the money, that's just talk.
I'd love to sell it.
I'd love to buy it. Alright, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance seventy-two, to amend certain portions of chapter twenty-six of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the architectural and engineering section, selection process and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance forty-six, to amend section ninety dash one twenty-four of chapter ninety of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to certain types of trucks being prohibited on certain streets. Ordinance forty-seven, amending the twenty twenty-two budget for Capital Projects Fund. Ordinance forty-eight, amending the twenty twenty-two budget for Street Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance forty-nine, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Street Special Revenue Fund Budget appropriating the funds authorized herein. Ordinance fifty, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget appropriating the funds authorized herein. Ordinance, ordinance fifty-one, levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of eleven point three one eight zero mils per dollar on all property subject to averlorium taxation within the City of Shreveport, Louisiana for the year twenty twenty-two for the purpose of paying principal and interest on outstanding general obligation bonds of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance fifty-two, levying and authorizing the collection of various taxes totaling seventeen point seven seven zero mils per dollar on all property subject to averlorium taxation within the City of Shreveport, Louisiana for the year twenty twenty-two in the amounts and for the purposes of described herein. Ordinance fifty-three, levying and authorizing the collection of tax, of a tax of nine point zero four zero mils per dollar on all property subject to averlorium taxation within the bounds of downtown, uh, Development District of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute thirty-three dot twenty-seven forty dot thirty-eight for the year twenty twenty-two in the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Ordinance fifty-four, to amend chapter forty-six, Medical Services, Section one oh two, Application Procedures, Section five Vehicle Compliance of the Ci- of, of the Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances. That's the last one.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed, uh, from the table today?
There's not.
Thank you. We have no property standards or ABO appeals to consider today. We have no MPC or ZVA appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Thank you. Are there any reports from offices, boards, and committees at this time? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk report?
Yes, we received a letter of appointment for Fire Chief Clarence Reese Junior on April twenty-first, subject for confirmation on May tenth.
Thank you. We have a request on the attorney to go into executive session on tomorrow. If there's nothing else to come before this body, please meet me in the drawing.